The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good afternoon. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 regular City Council meeting of September 15th, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Here.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Here.
Councilmember Smith.
I am here.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Here.
And Councilmember Parlier.
Thank you. On March 4th, 2020, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. We understand that many of the governor's executive orders related to COVID-19 have been rescinded or are due to expire soon. However, some orders remain in effect, including the suspension of some components of the Brown Act related to public meetings such as this. If you're here to make a public statement, please fill out a speaker card, give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. Please keep your comments to the 3:30 agenda items. If you have written comments, if you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give them to the clerk who will give copies to the council. If you're here on Workshop Item 3A, now is not the time to speak. You'll be given an opportunity to speak when that item is later called in the meeting. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to committee or request that staff contact you. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements, going off topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
No public speaker cards have been received.
Thank you. Next item, please.
Workshops Item 3A, Economic Development Strategic Plan. We've provided a staff memorandum, transmitting correspondence received.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We're very excited to bring this workshop item before you this evening. This has been a long time in coming. This has been a lot of really hard work, but really important work. I want to take a quick moment and reflect the number of members of our team that are here tonight. We have not had probably this many economic and community development staff in this chamber since the Redevelopment Agency days. And so that's, I think, we take that as really good news, that we have created this department, we've staffed it up, and we're going to be asking them to really, you know, be the group that, along with our many partners, that deploy this really important strategy. And so, just as a welcome and a sign of, you know, the good progress we're making, I wanted to point that out tonight. Clerk troubles again, darn it. Now it's working, thank you. So just wanted to give a high level, and then we'll ask Paul Saldana, our new Economic and Community Development Director, to run us through the agenda. And then we actually have some partners that speak to these items tonight. But, you know, this process has been very in-depth, and we are looking at the numbers. The numbers tell the story, and you have to rely on those numbers to really be effective in deploying limited resources. And this really looks at the future. The themes behind this, it's very much about innovation, it's very much about collaboration. You create more resources by working with others, not just the sum of those parts, but it's greater than the sum of those parts. And that we have been very inclusive. We've reached out to a number of different partners to make sure we're thinking about the needs of our builder community, the needs of our chambers, the needs of our small businesses. We've involved many people in this process. And then, as it relates to our timeline going forward, it's very well-aligned with other regional efforts. It still is very action-oriented, but we have to be deliberate in which actions we move forward with in year one, and year two, and year three. And it's very intentional. This is a strategic plan after all. Just want to point out that the Community Economic Development Department hits typically five or six of our eight City Council goals, and on this specific plan, it really is a major component of four of those City Council goals, and there's huge alignment with the priorities of your body. And ultimately, one of the reasons you need an Economic Development Department and folks that are leading out in that area is that, you know, every community needs somebody who's thinking about this and owning this work. And I'm really excited for our team, and particularly for Mr. Saldana, to be on the team and helping to drive this work with our many partners here in the community. With that, I'll invite Paul to come up and talk about what we're going to hit in this workshop.
Thank you, Mayor and members of the council. It's my honor to be here this afternoon and in my first, I guess, presentation to your council, to be able to introduce this particular topic and talk about our strategy. I just want to give you a highlight of our agenda this afternoon. We're going to have an update from Nick Ortiz regarding the B3K strategy. We feel this is important because it can interconnects with our economic development strategy for the city. Roger Dale will follow him with an overview of the Economic Development Strategic Plan that has been developed over the last several months. And then I will come in and present to you some of the action items that we're already engaged with in terms of moving economic development in the city of Bakersfield forward. Following our updates and presentations, we will entertain the questions and discussions. And then our recommendation and our request for action this afternoon is to adopt the Economic Development Strategic Plan. So with that, I will turn it over to Nick Ortiz for the first segment of this presentation.
Thank you very much, Paul.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. My name is Nick Ortiz with the Greater Bakersfield Chamber. Really excited to be in front of you today to talk about this really important strategy and all of the great work that the city is doing with a number of partners. You know, I think that today and this adoption of this strategy, obviously, it's not the finish line. This is the beginning. But it really does, I think, typify and is a great example of the work that the public sector and the private sector can do jointly together. And the work that, you know, our organization has been able to partner with the city on on a number of fronts, from Measure N to the Regional Branding Initiative. This EDSP and the companions to the EDSP provide a great opportunity to tell a wonderful story about our city and to improve our city and to improve economic development, economic opportunities, and prosperity. And so, tonight's hopeful adoption of this plan really does set in stage incredible alignment of economic development planning that truly has not been accomplished in Kern County or Bakersfield ever. It is an unprecedented level of collaboration and an unprecedented level of alignment. So what we have is the B3K prosperity strategy, the county's SEDS, which was approved by the Board of Supervisors yesterday, and the city's EDSP, along with a range of other statewide initiatives and federal funding opportunities that are happening, that really align and lift up the work that is happening in the Bakersfield-Kern County region. This is an incredible opportunity to not just think about how we grow economic prosperity in the city of Bakersfield, but how all of these levels of planning and all of these strategic initiatives grow the county, the city, and ultimately prosperity for all. So when we went through the branding exercise, we got the opportunity to tell a really great story about what we think of as Bakersfield and Kern County, the grounded and boundless and the sound of something better stories. But we also were confronted with some real challenges that we have to work through. And as we think about the economic fate of our neighbors, of our communities, we see that through a lot of data-driven research and reflection, we do have an issue in terms of economic prosperity in the region. Over half of residents struggle to make ends meet, less than 20% of the jobs are what we'd call good jobs that have quality benefits, sustainable wages, and some pathway to prosperity. This is happening, and we're seeing these statistics at a time where our two major industries, ag and oil, face an unprecedented level of regulatory and policy and market challenges that really put in jeopardy their ability to continue to be the provider of the majority of good jobs in the region. When we started B3K, we talked about these residents that struggle to make ends meet, and the fact that the most of them actually work, most of them are in the workforce. And so we set a policy goal of saying, we need to move half the children and 80% of the adults out of that struggling status. And in order to do that, that requires us either growing or creating or attracting or upgrading 100,000 quality jobs. So as you can see, we have now under 60,000 good jobs, around 36,000 promising jobs that could lead to a good job, and then the remainder are what we call other jobs, and that's the vast majority of the jobs available to our workforce. And when you look at this issue of an inclusive economic development planning effort, what we see is that age, race, educational attainment, all play a role in whether a worker struggles to make ends meet or can obtain one of those quality jobs. And the other piece that we're confronting and that this region really needs to, you know, take a hold of is the fact that we are in an incredible intense competition for regional growth. We are competing against other metros in the state and other like metros throughout the country. And one area where we face an incredible amount of lag is around educational attainment. You see that we have the highest levels of folks who either have no degree or only a high school education, and the lowest who have an associate's or above. And growing and attracting that 100,000 new jobs requires a skilled labor pool of all different types of skills. Not everything's going to require a master's degree, but it requires some level of post-secondary or some type of training. And what we see with these lags, whether it's an inclusion, whether it's an educational attainment, is that these lags create an overall drag on the economy. So this is kind of an eye chart, I'll admit, but what it plots is educational, well, per capita income, and plotted against how many, the percentage of residents who have a bachelor's degree or higher. And back in 2010, our region was punching above its weight. We had lower educational attainment, but with that, even though we had a higher per capita income than some of our competitor regions. The energy industry, the construction industry was a big piece of that. In 2018, you see that we have been, like, we've been lapped. We have competitor regions like Riverside who have not only increased their per capita income, but have also increased their educational attainment. And then digital skills, which is an area that the city has made some recent investments, are a significant need. Only one in five mid-tech and only one in 10 high-tech positions are filled each month. These positions either sit unvacant, or they go outside of the area, filled with outsiders or contractors. And we have people here who could be filling these jobs with some training. So when we look at B3K and our goals, our goals are around these principles of economic success, growing the economy and creating more quality jobs and improving the gross metropolitan or municipal product, the GDP of the area. That by growing that economy, we're creating more prosperity individually for folks with more competition for the labor pool, a more skilled labor pool, and higher wages for that labor pool. And that by doing that, we are actually in creating more opportunities for everyone in Bakersfield and Kern County to participate in those, accessing those economic opportunities, and having personal and familial prosperity. And we are closing some of those inclusion lags or some of those inclusion gaps that we've seen. And again, it counts on making investments and really looking at some of the key pieces of competitiveness. That's our traded sectors. So we have locally serving sectors like retail or healthcare that serve the local population, and then what are called traded sectors, like agriculture or oil, that actually produce a product that's sold outside of the area and brings new wealth in. And that can be a product, like a commodity, like we're kind of used to, a widget or intellectual property. And then it depends on innovation, how much research and development are we doing, how are we innovating, are we creating young firms that are knowledge-driven, and then are we creating that talent pool, which you've seen we do have issues and need to make some investments on. So as we went through this process, we did this very in-depth opportunity sector review that looked at the assets that we have in the region, where we can make investments and what sectors we can actually build economic development strategies around. And where we came out is this. We put together work groups around four specific industry sectors, energy, and especially around renewable fuels and carbon management, aerospace, around creating a true cluster initiative that supports the kind of existing and intrinsic facilities and opportunities that we have out there, advanced manufacturing, where we have specific subsectors that are performing well against national and statewide trends, business services, where we have a growing locus of talent and companies and opportunities. And then we had a kind of non-sectoral play around general support for entrepreneurship and business dynamism. Now, two areas that you don't see on this list are agriculture and logistics. And in previous presentations, I've kind of noted, that doesn't mean that we think the region needs to forsake agriculture or logistics. We should support both of them through advocacy on regulatory and policy issues, through incentive programs. But in terms of these opportunity sectors, what's the biggest bang you're going to get for your buck? When you belly up to the table, where are you placing your chips? These five sectors have the most promise, according to the data. So we have been engaged in an incredibly intense workgroup process, where detailed activation plans have been developed for the aerospace, advanced manufacturing, business dynamism and entrepreneurship, and business services workgroups and sectors. Those have all been led by professionals who, and leaders, business leaders who are involved in those industries, telling us exactly what they need to help those sectors grow. The energy sector is, the strategy is lagging. As you know, energy is a big, big thing, and it involves so much renewables, traditional oil and gas development, this burgeoning opportunity of carbon management, not just renewables in terms of electricity generation, but renewable fuels as well. And so where we've landed is we have an agreed-to set of principles and kind of vision, and we are still in the process of putting together that more detailed activation strategy. But these plans, not only, like, do they complement, they dovetail with the city's economic development strategy that you'll hear more from Roger Dale from Nadelson Dale about in just a moment. Now, one of the most important things, I think, to your council that has been reflected to me, is how do we not just chart a course for where we're going, how do we not just implement, but how do we measure our success? And how do we show off that we have been successful? And to that end, we've been working with the economics department at CSUB and have a group of professors who have been putting together the beginnings of this performance dashboard that will be available in the future that really is going to be data-driven and tracking the big picture overall growth, those competitiveness factors, and then how those individual sectoral strategies are achieving their goals and feeding up into the broader view of economic development success. There's so much on this chart that I'm not even going to try to read it. But I just want you to note, these are the factors that they'll be studying and looking at so that they can get a very discreet and in-depth on every one of these factors. Look at how we are achieving our metrics, how we're hitting our marks or not. And that will tell us where we need to make adjustments in the future. So I just want to say first that we so appreciate the opportunity to work with the city on this. And I appreciate the leadership of City Manager Clegg, and of course, I think, I'm so excited about the direction that Paul Saldana is going to take, the Community and Economic Development Department. The investments that the city is making are integral to the success of the region. This is not just about improving jobs or improving opportunity in the city limits. This is really the city of Bakersfield stepping up and becoming that regional steward that the ninth-largest city in California needs to be. And the leadership of the council and your staff leadership have been amazing and integral to getting us to this point. And we've been successful. We have seen investments by organizations like Valley Strong in a $1 million endowment at CSUB to further the B3K goals. We've been working through B3K on convening a group around a CDFI, a local funding entity, to actually create more capital for entrepreneurship. B3K has been lifted up at the state level as one of the rationales for the Community Economic Resilience Fund, a $600 million fund that would help us implement some of these strategies. And then we've even seen the city and the county partner to develop the Bitwise Business Incubator that's really taking the first steps on entrepreneurship and improving that sector. The next steps for B3K are to facilitate regional applications, along with our partners at the city and the county, and a range of folks who will support this for state and federal funding opportunities. We need to determine long-term governance. Each of these strategies will have a home in an organization. And so how will that happen? Who will be responsible for them? And then ultimately, how will we hold folks accountable? We need to complete that energy strategy and take it from a set of principles to that robust activation plan. And then on the activation plans that are completed, we need to deliver on them and actually implement. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you today. As the chamber, we obviously support the city's adoption of the EDSP. You should have received earlier a piece of correspondence where we brought together our coalition partners, the big business groups in the city, to say that we all are behind the city in approving this economic development strategy. So with that, I will turn it over to Roger Dale from the Nadelson Dale Group.
Thank you, Mr. Ortiz. Appreciate your leadership and the chamber's leadership. Welcome.
Thank you very much, Nick. Good afternoon, Mayor Go, members of the council. I'm Roger Dale with the Nadelson Dale Group. Really excited to be here this evening and to describe where we are in this process, at the finalization, hopefully, of the Economic Development Strategic Plan. And this is really a piece of the larger puzzle that Nick just described. There's been this tremendous effort going on regionally with B3K, involves a number of partners that potentially can support the city in its economic development process and has a regional focus. The part that I'm going to talk about now is specifically the city's strategy. Where do you fit into this as a city, and what are the specific actions that your staff and its partners can do to move forward on the types of opportunities that the B3K process has identified? So we've had a chance to visit several times during the course of our work. And as you know, this work has started with an analytical phase where we really reviewed what the market conditions are in Bakersfield and the surrounding region, got a sense of the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats, and have also incorporated a good deal of stakeholder outreach, including a lot of overlap and dovetailing with the B3K stakeholder outreach process and many of the business community stakeholders that Nick described. So I believe that the strategy that we're presenting today is based on a realistic assessment of your market position, and also reflects a tremendous amount of input from your stakeholders in the business community and beyond. As with the B3K process, our efforts included a target industry analysis. And you'll see that there's a great deal of overlap between the B3K sectors that Nick described and those that are, we have built the strategy for the city around. And I'll just describe briefly what these are and what the potential connections are to future opportunities. First of all, logistics. And I think we would concur with what Nick Ortiz just said, is that we're not necessarily going to focus on attraction of more of the types of facilities you have. Those will come by virtue of the strong market that exists. But the real opportunity, we think, is for the city to leverage that and to grow into other, more technologically-oriented industries that support the logistics industry. So you can think about autonomous vehicles or robotics, things that would be technologies that not only support the growth of that industry locally, but could be in themselves, export activities, things that you would export to other regions based on the expertise developed and the technologies developed locally. The next area is advanced business services. And this is something that specifically overlaps with the B3K process and one of the workgroups that has been functioning through B3K. Certain concepts involved there would involve second, positioning Bakersfield as a second office location for firms from Los Angeles and the Bay Area, or for back-office facilities, that could be even services that are provided nationally from firms based in Bakersfield. And also, that would include the larger tech sector of information technology. The third major area we've listed here is manufacturing. Certain existing industries, including agriculture, food processing, and other miscellaneous manufacturing activities that are here now, would form a basis for expanding the whole area of value-added food processing, agritech, or certain things might be called the bioeconomy, transportation equipment, again, potentially linking to your logistics space, aerospace, a lot of that now is concentrated in the eastern part of the county, but there could potentially be connections here. And then other types of advanced manufacturing that would position the city to create the types of good and promising jobs that Nick described are so crucial at this point in your evolution as a local economy. The last area we've described is environmental services. And that, again, picks up things that are already here, like your energy sector. There are opportunities to think more about renewables, carbon sequestration, other things that, again, we're not turning our back on the existing base of industries, but how can we grow from that to things where there will be an expanded market rather than a retracting market, and that has the opportunity to provide the types of jobs that we're targeting? Again, this could include environmental technology, R&amp;D, renewable fuels, and carbon sequestration, just as examples. What the B3K process has, I think, really brought to light is that there are a number of longstanding challenges facing this region. You're all aware of those. But we're also, I believe, at a unique moment of opportunity as a city and as a region. And the plan that we've put together, we hope pulls together the opportunities that you have now, and especially the opportunity that you have to essentially develop a new level of economic developing, economic development programming as a city. The new leadership, the new staffing, and potentially new funding that you have to support that function really puts you in a position to move forward in a way that the city has not done in the past. And so we would like to think that this plan is a blueprint for that next stage of your economic evolution. I'm going to briefly go through the major goals that we've identified as part of this plan, and then talk a little more about the strategic implementation. First of all, a group of goals that we would categorize as just generally characterizing the core economic development activities of the city. First would be to position the city as a destination for innovation. And I think I described in that target industry slide, all of the existing strengths that you have have potential linkages to higher innovation activities. And that's really where we would like to see the city focus in terms of its future business attraction and entrepreneurial development efforts. The next thing is retention, transition, and advancement of your traditional mainstay industries. We know that there's some significant challenges facing agriculture and oil in particular. And we know that those need to continue to be strong industries here, but we can support that in a way that also looks to future opportunities for the evolution and expansion of those to things that might be more long-lasting opportunities. The next thing is to increase the region's resiliency, economic resiliency, through the support of those traditional sectors, as well as integrating more sustainability objectives across all aspects of the city's economic development program. Last thing on this slide is to ensure that all of these benefits that we're creating in terms of new jobs, new investment, new opportunity, are accessible to all residents in Bakersfield. And again, this dovetails very closely with the concept of good jobs and promising jobs that was identified in the B3K process, to ensure that we're not only creating opportunities, but that they are a good match for your resident and your workforce. We've got some goals that we would characterize under the headings of revitalization, workforce, and foundational investments. Under revitalization, this, it would involve actual physical renovation and reinvestment in key older neighborhoods, for example, the downtown or southeast Bakersfield, looking at ways to identify Bakersfield as a high-quality-of-life and high-quality-of-place location. And we've identified some areas that we would call quality-of-place initiatives to pursue that. A lot of this would involve real estate projects, and we've identified some ideas for incentivizing the types of high-impact real estate projects in these targeted areas that you're looking for. Under the heading of workforce or entrepreneurial development, it's essential, as we've emphasized throughout this process, that everything that we do in the way of creating opportunity connects to your workforce, and that your workforce is well-positioned to take advantage of those opportunities that will come as the economy grows. Another way of opportunity-making is entrepreneurial development. And there is a tremendous focus in the B3K process through one of the workgroups, as well as in our plan, to expe- well as in our plan, to expand access to capital and other resources for those types of business startups and expansions. The last group of things related to the goals are what we would call foundational investments or partnerships. And I think if there's a theme that really resonates throughout this plan is that this is about bold investments, that the city is really at a time in its history where it needs to consider bold investments in infrastructure, education, community amenities, to support these broader economic development objectives. And then finally, that, as I mentioned, this is a time when the effectiveness of your efforts going forward will depend on the level of commitment and the level of resources that are in back of it. But it's also an opportunity in the sense that there are substantial federal and state funding programs available at this moment. And this plan in itself will better position the city to pursue those and to have a game plan for effectively implementing that funding once it's secured. I'm going to talk now about the actual strategies. And we have outlined in our document 17 major strategy categories, which are then in turn broken down in terms of over 100 specific action items. And, of course, we won't take time this afternoon to go through all of those, but I just want to give you an overview. The first group of strategies would involve direct industry targeting, in other words, business development, job creation, kind of the core activities of an economic development program. The next group is what I would describe as umbrella programs. They're not directly pursuing job creation, but they're supporting that through creating an environment where you can have success in business growth and job growth. And then the last part also deals with land use and place making. And I would describe those as physical changes that would enable you to accommodate the quality growth that you're pursuing and to make sure that your neighborhoods are sharing in that growth and those opportunities in an equitable way. I'm not going to go through this in detail, but it's just a matrix that shows the 17 major strategy categories that are in our plan. And if you've had a chance to review it and you've got questions, we're glad to jump into those after our presentation. But it lays those against the major goals that I just walked through. And I guess the point of this slide is you can kind of see that these 17 major strategy groups address multiple goals each, so that collectively, each of these goals is being hit from a number of different angles to ensure that you're successful across the board in addressing these goals in a way that's systematic and comprehensive. Each of those 17 strategies is laid out in the plan that we, as I mentioned, would hope would be a blueprint or a specific guideline for your staff in implementing this new economic development strategy and program. And we've identified the first three years of activities that would occur under this plan. So for each of the 17 strategies, there's a list of action items. They're categorized in terms of first year, second year, third year. There are also estimates of the amount of resources that it might realistically take to fully implement each action item. And then we've also listed for each item the partnership's resources that would be relevant. In other words, the specific organizations in the region that would support the city potentially in implementing and providing resources to implement those activities. And we've also listed specific milestones or a checklist for each item that identifies what we would expect to occur within the first year to kind of guide the staff in knowing what level of effort is appropriate for the first year and what would be a successful accomplishment at the end of the year. And then we've also identified some specific metrics. In other words, specific data points that you would look at at the end of the first year and the second year and the third year to measure the impact that these activities are having, not only on your program itself, but on the larger local economy. Last thing I wanted to mention is that when we boil it all down, we've got a pretty long list of strategies and, as I've said, over 100 action items. We wanted to kind of make this real in a way that it's tangible to you and to your community. So, we've identified seven of these action items or programs that we would call game-changers. These are programs or projects that would be very visible, signature projects for this effort and for your economic development program. And, again, these are outlined or in more detail in the strategy, but I'll just list what they are now. The first is the idea of a technology park that would be potentially a joint venture between the city, the state, Bakersfield, and the private sector, a place where the types of innovative industry activities that we've targeted could actually have a physical home and a place where that is supported by academic research that puts Bakersfield in advantage to attract those types of firms and those types of entrepreneurial startups based on the connection to academic research, as well as supportive resources in a physical location where those businesses could start up. There's also a bioeconomy initiative. In other words, looking at things that grow in an agricultural economy and identifying the products that could be produced from them. And we know this is obviously what you've already been doing for generations, but to expand the types of products that come out of that bioeconomy, to look at things like renewable energy connections or other products besides food that come out of an agricultural economy, potentially. We're very interested in your sister-city program with a community in South Korea and have outlined some next steps for that. And, again, this could be a very effective way to increase foreign direct investment, to increase import-export activity between Kern County and South Korea. And at the same time, it's also just kind of a visible activity within your community that you can see that the real-world connections of what economic development means, the investment that you're making as a city, and translating that to a business impact in your community. We've talked about a smart mobility strategic plan. Again, the idea is to link technology, things like electrical vehicles, robotics, logistics, things that already have a foothold here, to a community-wide plan for smart mobility that would position Bakersfield or give Bakersfield an image of being an innovative, technology-oriented place. Kind of getting back to some more local thinking, downtown, we think you've done a tremendous job already to get it started as a place that's popular and attractive within your community and can be a destination from beyond Bakersfield. And we think it's very important to continue to invest in and upgrade that area. We know we've got an upcoming general plan process, and we would hope that this would be, again, something that would continue to get a focus and something that distinguishes Bakersfield as a quality-of-life location. Last thing is what we're calling reinvent retail. And we are all aware of the transition that's going on in the retail industry and how many older, larger shopping centers are having challenges keeping their tenants and their occupancy levels high. And that may involve needs to think about reinventing those shopping centers, maybe downsizing the retail footprint and introducing other land uses. And this game-changer project would involve a demonstration project that would, the city potentially could support in policy ways and perhaps even financially, a demonstration of that on a large scale that could serve as a model for other retail revitalization projects in other parts of the city. So, I'm going to stop now and let Paul take over. I just wanted to, again, thank you for the opportunity of working with you. It's been, it's really been a pleasure to interact with the council on the several occasions that we've had a chance to visit with you. Staff has been tremendously impressive. City Manager Clegg has been very supportive of this process throughout. Cecilia Griego has been the ideal project manager, kind of keeping this going through this past year. And also extremely impressed with the new leadership from Mr. Saldana. I would say that he has hit the ground running, but I don't think he even took time to hit the ground. He's just kind of flying through his, this position in a way that you don't often see in someone that comes into a position and already just really accomplishing great things. So, I have great confidence that this team and your team will move this initiative forward. I mean, our work is done, but we're here to support you as we can. But the difference now is what's behind me and what's, and your support, that's what will make the difference in a successful effort. And I've got a high degree of confidence that your team is going to make this plan look good in the coming years. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dale. Mr. Saldana, we have very high expectations as you fly now.
Well, I have to give credit to the city manager for that. During my orientation, I received a jetpack, so thank you for that. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we're doing now that strategic planning is almost over. You'll hear me talk about this quite a bit. I'm one that talks a lot about strategic doing versus strategic planning. And I think that there's, these points make relevant what that is. It's our responsibility, really, to build a prosperous and sustainable future for the future generations. It gives us the ability to collaborate and to build that together with other folks. And really, it is about doing and getting the work done. And so, as you've probably seen or heard through this process, we have been not just planning, but also looking at how we move the ball forward in this regard. So, I'll give you a couple of things of what we're doing in terms of the internal structure of the organization. And, again, like the city manager indicated, I'm very pleased to have members of our team here to share in this opportunity to deliver this plan to you, to the council, and to hear the, you know, really the strategy that we are going to be implementing moving forward. There are three teams that we are organizing within our, I won't say our staff because it's beyond our staff. It's really a collaboration with other organizations, as Mr. Ortiz indicated, from the chamber and through our work with B-3K. This is really going to be a lot of other folks involved. But we see having a business success team, which will work with businesses to help them expand and locate in the city, an economic opportunity team, which will develop and implement programs that achieve economic investments in our designated areas that we want to see investment in, and then what I'm calling the Something Better Team. And that's really a marketing team that's sharing that there is something better here in the city of Bakersfield. On the technology side, we're taking the application and the use of technology in economic development to a whole nother level. As an example, we have a business intelligence system that we're deploying, which gives us the opportunity to both monitor industry trends and to look at company growth within the industry and score companies based on their potential for expansion and location. And just to give you an idea, when you were hearing about the logistics side of things, we've already used a system to identify a list of companies that provide services and products to distribution logistic facilities throughout the valley that are not located here. Why aren't they located here is probably a good question, and that's going to be the first list of companies that we go out to talk to and say, you know, you need to be here in Bakersfield to serve all of your clients and that are located here. We're going to have a customer relationship management system so that we know what businesses was contacted. And if any of you, as members of the council or members of the business community, say, hey, have you heard, you know, from this company or that company or this is going on? We actually have a database of that information, and we can exchange that information with others and know what is happening in those companies and in those industries. We will have the ability to do a fiscal and economic impact analysis on any project of any size, so we can inform the impact that those projects have. And then, lastly, we're going to have some direct decision-maker engagement. And we've already started to do that and will continue to do that. And that's bringing folks here that have either direct involvement in making decisions for their companies, or they influence those decisions. I love this graphic because it really talks about what we're doing, are going to be doing here, and that's turning traditional economic development upside down. A lot of economic development organizations spend a lot of time talking to a lot of businesses, and only 5% of those businesses may even have the opportunity to grow or expand or locate into a community. We're going to spend our time through using these systems and using the relationships that we've developed and the information that is coming through us through our EDSP and B-3K to actually focus our work on those companies that are in that 65% to 75% likelihood of expansion. So, it gives us a larger opportunity to locate companies that are going to grow and expand versus spending a lot of time with companies that may not do that. And the last thing I'd like to share with you is sort of my, my hope for the future of what people would say when we talk about the sound of Something Better. I'd like to see them say, you know, did you hear that Bakersfield is the most business-friendly city in California? Or they say, hey, did you hear Bakersfield is the leading location for innovation? Or that they're not only a place to grow crops and businesses, but they grow the workforce of those businesses. They're creating opportunity for all segments of the community. These are the things we want to hear them say about the Something Better that is happening here in Bakersfield. And as I said, we're just getting started with Roger leaving me with a list of 100 strategies and activities. We are just getting, we are just getting started. Our focus for the remainder of this fiscal year will be on targeting those year-one action steps and seeing them, as many of those that completed as we can complete, developing out the game changers that Roger had mentioned, and then working with the B-3K group and facilitating regional implementation, but making sure that as we're involved in that regional implementation, it has local impact for the residents of the city of Bakersfield. So, with that, I will turn it back over to the city manager, who will facilitate some questions and discussion.
Mr. Clegg, do you have any further comments before we go to the public?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk, thank you, Mr. Saldana. Madam City Clerk, do we have any requests from the public to speak?
No public speaker cards have been received regarding this item.
Thank you. Colleagues, any requests to speak? Councilmember Gray.
Well, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming and sharing our, this plan with us. I know with what's going on in the world economy, and especially with our ag and oil, it's very important that we start planning for the future. So, I appreciate all the work that you all have put in it. As you've said, you've just begun, so there's a lot of work now. I wouldn't want those 170 checklist items in front of me. So, I'm glad it's you and not me, Mr. Saldana, but you've taken on a big, a big job, and we appreciate it. I know this was a real high-level presentation that you did for us tonight, just to kind of, you know, give us a little bit of something to chew on. But I was curious, when you said under umbrella programs that you're wanting to, creating an environment for economic progress, and can you share any examples of that that's just kind of off the top of your head in that particular area, either one of you?
As Paul comes forward, councilmember, I'll just weigh in on that really quickly as well. A typical economic development department would offer a series of programs to local businesses, like business startup grants or business expansion grants, facade improvement loans, or we just have a welcome packet for any new business that submits a business license. We have staff available to help walk people through the process of, you know, getting a business license or going through a development process. And so, those are the typical types of things. You just want to have to support the overall, you know, economic development environment that have been in my head, but I'll defer to Roger and Paul to add any other examples.
Yeah, thank you. So, when we talk about core economic development programs, that would be the things that get the most attention in the media usually. You attract a new firm, or you invest in a new company that creates so many new jobs, or you attract a new development project that people can physically see. And that's, that's the end game. But to be successful in that, you've got to have a background or a culture, really, in your community that attracts those type of activities and investments. So, when we talk about umbrella programs, it would be things like, we've got a strategy that deals with business friendliness. Okay? So, that's not something that is necessarily as tangible as a certain number of new jobs or a new shopping center or logistics facility. But before you get those things on the ground, your success at doing that is going to be much higher if you've got... your success at doing that is going to be much higher if you've got a reputation and a system that is specifically recognized as being business-friendly. So we've got some specific recommendations in there for that. Another example of an umbrella program would be the concept of partnering with other organizations outside the city government. So partnerships with the types of organizations that have supported the B3K process or the private sector investors. These are things that you kind of nurture behind the scenes. But again, when you've got those in place, it makes you much more effective at those headline activities of creating new jobs and new investment. So thank you. Maybe you want to add anything to that, Paul?
Just wrote quickly, internally, internal of the organization, it's having somebody within our business success team in the economic community development staff that can go and be an internal champion for those projects. So as things are moving through the planning process or other processes within the city, there's someone on the advocacy side that is serving as that champion for that project.
Okay, great. And I've got another question. Being a very small businesswoman in Bakersfield, we're fortunate enough that we are part of a franchise organization. So they were able to help us with what our market share was coming into opening our business here in Bakersfield. Do you, that's kind of on a micro thing, but there's a lot of entrepreneurs out there, and they really don't know that much about business, but they want to open one. Is there going to be any help that the city can give to those small business people to say, yeah, your business could do, you know, a million, 3 million, 10 million in our area with the help?
Yes, there is. I mean, in terms of our programs and working with, you know, some of the other organizations in the community that do small business assistance, we'll definitely be collaborating with them and helping to match them with that. But there's also a tool that we'll be unveiling. I didn't mention it in here, but it's actually a tool that will be online on our website that will allow for a small business to say, I want to locate a, let's say, a coffee shop in this part of the community. They can actually do a radius and determine what the market share, where their competition is, what their market share might be. And it's not just limited to the city limits. They can actually go and look throughout the region. So that tool will actually assist in those types of market analysis. So to the extent that we can bring the resources that will help a business to grow and to expand or to start up, that's what we want to do, is look at those opportunities.
That's great. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Smith, next, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Pretty exciting, pretty big chore you have to move an economy, I think, is a good challenge. I think that Bakersfield is positioned for a lot of reasons to see growth in the future, and we want to see good, positive economic growth. And if we go through the right steps, we can get there. And if we go through the wrong steps, then we won't get there. We'll have growth that is not good for us. I'm very excited about the collaboration with the chamber and the county and everybody working together with Councilmember Gray. 100 action steps, I think, you know, glad it's yours and not mine. But we'll look forward to the update next year and see how many you got through. But yeah, great time and look forward to moving forward with it. So I will make the motion to adopt the Economic Development Strategic Plan.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Gonzalez has a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to echo the point to my colleagues up here on the dais, and just a big congratulations to all who have contributed so much time, energy, and effort, blood, sweat, and tears to make this all happen. Really impressed. I just have a few questions, if I may. Nick in his presentation recognized, lifted up, that our region must generate 100,000 quality jobs in order for us to move 50% of our children and 80% of adults into self-sufficiency. And so as we drill down into the city's strategy and our work, Mr. Saldana, you recognized that we were going to have specific fiscal and economic impact analyses as we move forward. Are we tracking those quality jobs? Is that part of the plan as well? Can you talk to us about that?
Sure. We haven't yet fully developed the metric system that we'll be evaluating, but that will certainly be part of that, is that we want to see income levels increase in those types of activities that are going to have measurable, you know, results within the community. And I think, Nick, it presented some of those in the B3K dashboard that I think are very applicable to apply at the city level as well.
That's great to hear, and that's something that I'll be looking out for as we proceed forward, and I appreciate your work on that. We know that we are positioned well to grow in our region, our economy, but it must be equitable, and we have to provide those pathways. And so I appreciate B3K lifting that point up, that inclusion is a primary pillar of the economic development strategy for our region. But certainly locally, we have to be very, very focused on equitable development and those opportunities for people to move up the economic ladder in real tangible ways. And so I just want to appreciate all of the work and making, at this point, a significant centerpiece to the plan. The last question I have is, you know, we've seen time and time again the need for us to focus on workforce development, and educational attainment rates are often a concern. And, you know, this is not an education institution. The city has its functions. We have great institutions locally, but there are ways in which the work can intersect. And I just wondered if you, if anyone can indicate or illustrate for us intersections where the city and educational institutions can really work together in real ways for us to get towards our goals.
Thanks, Paul, because I do have some thoughts on that one. I do think workforce development is sort of the easy answer because they're in the education business, and that absolutely is part of the equation and part of the answer. Both Bakersfield College and CSUB have been very engaged in some of those conversations around workforce development as well, the B3K efforts and goals. But I also want to highlight, when we're talking about the technology park, we feel like that's an important aspect to build out the capacity of our research institutions, both public and private, but those public research institutions in universities around the tech park and have a direct connection on that. And there's actually some building blocks already in place for that that we can really leverage on. And then I think some of our other industry clusters, like advanced manufacturing and logistics, we think that there's some real opportunities to partner up with Bakersfield College and potentially others to hone in on the workforce development and expansion of some of those industry sectors as well. And if you want to jump in on anything else, Paul?
I just wanted to add and give you a real example of this at work. I met with the dean of the Career and Technical Education at Bakersfield College to go over, they're having a new program on electrical vehicle repair, right? There aren't electrical vehicle repair shops out in the community yet or deployed out there, but they're already training, they're starting programs to train in that particular area. So my visit with him was on, are you just limiting to that? Because there are other areas in which electric repair or that type of activity could take place. For example, there are companies that are now deploying electric forklifts in distribution centers and in other types of applications. And so we already, through that conversation, we were able to identify some additional workforce development opportunities, because if we're out recruiting businesses that are doing these new technologies, we need the workforce to come along with that. So to sort of wrap that question up, a big part of that is communication, ongoing communication. And I think that's one of the things that, you know, you'll see us continuing to have those dialogues with, you know, with our strategic partners in that area and share the information about what we're looking at, what we're doing, the types of businesses and industries that we're talking to. Because, and again, the question comes up, what is your workforce like? What is it going to be like? And we want to be able to effectively and confidently address those questions, not just for today, but for the future.
Great. I really appreciate that response, and I thank you for all the work. And it's good to see a big economic development department, our number-one team out there, working hard, trying to build our economy. Thank you all very much for all the work you're doing day in and day out. And just more broadly, thank you to all the community partners, to the Chamber of Commerce, to the county, to all the city folks here. All these stakeholders who decided to work together in collaboration to make this happen has been really tremendous and important for our community. So what a monumental moment, and I'm very proud of this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Arias.
Paul, Mr. Dale, Nick, thank you guys so, so, so much for the work that you are doing. I am not envious, like Councilmember Smith, of the work that you guys are doing, but it's so essential to get us into this new phase of where, you know, the city of Bakersfield and our local economy is headed. My question is actually going to piggyback off of Councilmember Gonzalez's point about the importance of inclusivity throughout this process. And so I just had a quick question, you know, as it relates to, you know, it's important to create, you know, jobs writ large, but it's another thing to also ready the workforce and meet them where they're at. A lot of times, there are barriers to, you know, language, barriers to childcare. There are obviously skills gap issues, educational attainment issues, and even things like removing tattoos. A lot of the work that is done by some of our local nonprofits and nonprofits throughout the state. So I'm curious, what does that relationship or what does that language look like as it stands right now with our local nonprofits?
Thank you.
And thanks for that question, because I think it's really important. So as part of the B3K process, one of the things that we've been really intentional about is that coming alongside all of the work groups has been what we call a Deep Prosperity Advisory Council, that takes a look at all of these strategies from the lens of how are some of these impacted populations, how are some of these inclusion gaps going to be closed by these strategies, and what have we not considered when we're just looking at like some of the nuts and bolts, like you've said. And so, like, for example, a living, breathing example, because I think that's probably most important, is looking at things like our business and entrepreneurship strategy, where we had some suggestions from the Deep Prosperity Advisory Committee that really put in place some strategies around, okay, how do we not just have more entrepreneurship and business support, but how do we have Spanish-language entrepreneurship business support? How do we support women entrepreneurs in very specific ways? And how do we build some wraparound services around those types of entrepreneurs so that we can incent them and help them to start their businesses and to really kind of develop this next level of innovation, knowledge-based, small businesses that we need in the region? So it's an incredible point, and as we go through all of this, our goal is, at least through the B3K process, is to keep that Deep Prosperity Advisory Committee going and getting their feedback about what that looks like. And that is a very diverse group and includes folks who generally are not involved in what we would consider like economic development or business development discussions.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Arias. We've talked about collaboration for many years in our community. It's so refreshing to be able to see true collaboration where the city and the county, the private and the public sector, nonprofits, grassroots organizations come together. So thank you to all of you and looking forward to great days ahead. We have a motion. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Vice Mayor Weir. Councilmember Arias.
Aye.
Councilmember Gonzalez.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Freeman. Councilmember Gray.
Yes.
Councilmember Parlier. Motion is approved with Councilmember Weir or with Vice Mayor Weir, Councilmembers Freeman and Parlier absent.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ortiz, Mr. Dale, Mr. Saldana, Mr. Clegg. We appreciate it. And now the next item, please.
Close session, item 4A, conference with labor negotiator.
Councilmember Smith?
Move to adjourn to the closed session.
We're adjourned to closed session. Reconvening the 3:30 city council meeting, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. There's only one item on closed session tonight, item 4A, and there is no reportable action. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're adjourned at 5:30. The 3:30 meeting is adjourned at 5:30.